Yeah, backup though, right?
Yeah.
All right, what's going on? Yeah, it's okay. Well, now this is what's... They're trying to do anything, they want to just bring you guys, but it doesn't matter. You went for the plan. Okay, thanks very much. But that's moving on. This whole thing, city with the wolves and birds, city with water, I don't know. So, the story of the wolves and birds.
Um, but you guys come through on the speakers and it'll pick it up better. If I don't, plug into the system.
Yeah. So, the sanders. And then they have to do that in a certain amount of time. Which is what we found in the gas station. The treatment plants off, that makes me feel a lot of... So, those are the... It's still on good side. We, the projects, we start out to talk until it's over.
Yes, because that, that ends it. She was there. But if you notice the traffic there, here's a little light bulb after that. You know, one way or another, it's a board, you know, at least a part of that. But maybe...
Yeah, Tom, so, Tom, I think.
Tom, yeah, Tom, thank you.
It's gonna be... Yeah. 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 I had scheduled it to start at nine o'clock, so I think it's required now. Um, but then the channel will... Yeah, hold for a minute? Yeah. 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 And I think it would be to the west, I'm sure, and it would start at nine o'clock. Yeah. 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 Yeah, that's my U I D. Yeah. And then... Yeah. 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 He has a message for it. I don't have a... Yeah. 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 He sounds like he's... Yeah. And... Yeah. 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 Tom, you ready?
Uh... One minute. Two minutes. Five minutes. Five seconds. A little bit. We had a... So... 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 Turn down. Turn down. Keep going.
Down?
Yeah. Tom, you ready?
About this meeting, George. He's...
Dear heavenly Father, please not bless today our decision, may the travel be here today, in your name we pray, amen.
Thank you.
And to your body, for what you stand.
Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Alton?
Present.
Commissioner Alton?
Present.
Prove the agenda, any changes, additions, corrections?
Alton?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
And Mr. Lopez?
Yes. Consideration minutes, regular meeting minutes of August first, and special meeting minutes of August third.
Um... The only thing I have was under new business, uh, under being, um... Under four hundred.
That's on the regular?
Yes. Mm-hmm. That's not, not the major, like that.
Which item again?
Uh, new business, be on the, uh, dollar grant, on the four hundred.
Yes, instead of four hundred dollars, we will need to change that to four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, give it that change?
Mm-hmm.
May the motion approve?
One second.
Mr. Alton?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes, that was the August first, correct?
No, no, five, so it's probably better to do the third, if we made a change there, so let's do the third, or second. Um, I had nothing on the, uh, meeting on the third.
May the motion approve?
One second.
Mr. Alton?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes, that was the August first, correct?
No, no, five, so it's probably better to do the third, if we made a change there, so let's do the third, or second. Um, I had nothing on the, uh, meeting on the third.
May the motion approve?
One second.
Mr. Alton?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes, that was the August first, correct?
No, no, five, so it's probably better to do the third, if we made a change there, so let's do the third, or second. Um, I had nothing on the, uh, meeting on the third.
May the motion approve?
One second.
Mr. Alton?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes. Uh, correspondence, commissioner, committee, first, Commissioner Lopez.
I don't have anything at this particular time. Uh, the only thing I have was, uh, the wildlife, state wildlife commission was down asking for their, their meeting, and been about, I think it's the second time in about eleven years, eleven years that they had their meeting. And, uh, so, it's a good function, and welcome them to our county, and told them, uh, take their time leaving and earn back. That's all I got.
I don't have anything. Uh, fucking Tom, yeah, Tom Murphy?
Good morning, commissioners and staff. Couple of weeks ago, I told you that we're gonna start loading things up to YouTube. But in the back, I've been working on, um, live streaming you guys. And as of this morning, I'm not sure, because technology doesn't always work. You might be on YouTube right now, my channel, it's been up for several years. Um, it's really cool, uh, people can watch this live, um, and I, there's a couple of things I haven't done yet, is I can input your agenda, as we're moving along, I'll timestamp it, so that people, when they wanna go back and watch it, if they wanna just look at one agenda, it will take you right to that. Or if you wanna Google certain words, like, "Molter, I told you not to do that," um, they just type in that, and it'll bring up video, you know, right there. Uh, it's a, it's a huge leap, um, and I've been doing this for the other entities that I film, government entities. Um, you know, I started the channel in two thousand and four, and my goal at that time was to, to do it live, but I would've had to hardwire from here to my place, to, to the city, and it just, it wasn't feasible. So, um, one of the things that Luis talked about was transparency, and that's what this is all about. Um, getting people more involved in, in our local government is, is what's gonna make a big difference. Uh, you can argue all you want about the president and whatever else, and even at the state level. Um, I actually got a bill passed in two thousand and twelve, and let me tell you, um, doing things even at the state level isn't easy. You guys were just talking about bringing people down here. But at the local level, you guys are right here, people can pull you aside and talk to you and say, "Here's what's going on," and make a difference, and that's what all this is about. So, it's been, um, my pleasure for the last twelve years of doing this, because I think we've affected a lot of change, because people are aware. And now that you're gonna be doing debruising, I think it is, um, as I said before, if we wanna sit down, we can even go live, you know, just as a, you know, it's nothing with Janet Carson, stuff like that, he wasn't live, but, you know, we can sit down and have a lot of discussion, and educate the people in this county, and, and turn it on itself and say, "Here's what we should do this." And I'm gonna be that venue for you guys. So, uh, it's one thing to put it out there, to tape it, put it out there, but if you can go live, and get people to call in, or get people to come and sit down with us, even people that are opposed to your ideas, it all comes back to what Luis said, when he sat down here, more transparency, more transparency. That's the key word, is transparency. And I'm not sure that it says that it's working, but I know technology, and the first time you do anything, it never works. So, by the next meeting, I was here listening for an hour trying to make this work, um, and it didn't work, it worked just fine. So, we'll see, but, um, anyway, uh, gonna look forward to this, guys.
Look, Tom, thank you for doing this, I, I'm happy, that's, that's great, and I appreciate that you've been doing it for these years, and just kinda coming here, spending part of your day with us every first and third Tuesday. Uh, the question I have is if you're going live, can you put us some of the window message, "Debruising"?
I think I can. There's a lot of things you can do with this. Real quick, a real funny story, when we started doing this, and we're doing the newspaper at the same time, um, we have one elected official, we started filming, and we would sit down with him and say, "I wanna talk to you about this issue." And we'd say, um, "Well, this is what you said," "I didn't say that," and you pull up the camera, and it's like, "You said this right here," and they said, "Well, well, that's what I said, but that's not what I meant." And I'm like, "They're never gonna invent a camera, or something that's gonna help us with, you know, what you've meant." So, it's just been a, a big change, so be careful what you say, you know, think it through, go slow, and, and it'll be fine, but, um, it's, it's been an interesting journey, and, uh, I, I know that, that this has made a big difference for a lot of people and a lot of issues. You know, we've had some, some successes and some failures, but if people, um, know what's going on, uh, it'll make a difference. Uh, but like I said, people can argue all you want about the presidential politics and stuff that's going on nationally, the only thing you're gonna get is an argument between two people, it's not gonna affect any change, but at this level, you can make a big difference in your community. And, and this is where it starts, here, at the city especially. So, I'm, I'm, I've been wanting to do this for a long time, but it kinda happened quicker than I, what I wanted it to, so as I told this from Molter, I was gonna have this stuff up quickly at the last meeting, and it didn't happen, because I jumped to this. So, I'm probably gonna go back to January with your meetings, and get all those posted, so that people can have a reference point and move forward, so, but they're watching, guys, so...
Interesting for, for the media, uh, the media, your, what your channel is, or how...
It's, it's on YouTube, we, and all this is still gelling together. We have a Facebook page, but that, that just is a, a portal to take you to the YouTube channel. YouTube channel's turned at times TV seventy-one, and it's been there for several years. We, like many other things I've done, we started, we stopped, we started, we stopped, ran into difficulties when we shut down the paper, uh, and, you know, we're like a lot of other people, we've dusted it up, we've picked ourselves up, dusted ourselves off, and we're trying to move forward. Um, and that's what it's, this community is, we're survivors, you know, a lot of us have been through hard times, and, and still are, and so we're just trying to make it all work, but, um, I'm proud of what I've done here with, with a lot of this, um, through time. I wish I would've done it, you know, a lot better and, uh, more frequent, but as far as being at, like, a city and county for the last twelve years, if I, you did it on Thursday, and I just, it's not programmed in, when you guys do special meetings, so occasionally, I might've missed a special meeting, but in twelve years, I bet I can come on one hand, and there were meetings out of this. So, uh, and again, the more people that know, the more people that are involved, the better opportunity that this community is gonna have to, to move forward, and, um, again, so people are watching. And, but you guys have done a great job, so, um, let's look forward to the future.
I just wanna thank you, and you've been a big advocate for transparency, uh, it's a thankless type of job, like this profession, and just like anything else, there's gonna be ups and downs, glitches in every profession, but you, you hung in there, and, but which you had to do.
It's cost me in my business, but it's been worth it, because some of the things that we've facilitated, it won't change her. And if people hold that against me, and you just, you know, "You guys, there are business," no, it's, it could cost you, but it's like, you know what? In the end, I'd rather be noted for, for the things that I did like that, than how much I had in my bank account. So, um, uh, we live in a country, the, the rest of the world end these, because they don't have this opportunity to, to speak to our elected officials like we are. So, anyway, this is, this is a huge step, and, um, really looking forward to it, so, yes, thank you.
What did you say that August, uh, third meeting was about? The special meeting?
On holiday bruising.
You, "Debruising"?
Was it? Did you? Okay, all right, all right. Thanks, Tom. This is great for our community, Tom, we really appreciate it, because normally, we don't have this group of people in here, we have two or three, and, and the media, so this would be great for people at home, they can come to the nine o'clock, and they'll watch it at home.
Okay, yes. Ed Gilda Rubio, who was a former senior teacher, they were, had cable in southeastern, uh, New Hampshire, wherever he was from, he said, "A woman actually got out of her bathtub and came to the, to the meeting." Because she was sitting in there, she's like, "I don't believe you guys did that, how crazy are you?" So, don't be surprised if somebody comes running in here. You might wanna put public comments at the beginning of the meeting, and at the end, for people that run out. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Sharon Mercer.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. Pull that down, just a...
Just a little bit?
A little bit.
There you go. Okay, um, I'm Sharon Mercer, um, I live in South Laguardia, um, I have several of my neighbors here, um... We have some grow sites up in, uh, South Laguardia, that we are concerned about, um, they're out of stakers. Um, last year, I contacted the sheriff's department, they came, talked to the people, told us that, called me back, and said that they were growing for personal medicinal use. Well, I don't have stupid on my forehead, you don't have four or five green houses for personal medicinal use. Um, we had U-Hauls up there last fall, taking, from the Bus Valley Road, taking stuff out, um, and like I say, these are out of stakers. Um, we have heavy water trucks on our roads, we live on dirt and dirt roads, um, we've got some ruts in our roads that are horrible. Um, one of our landowners went down to speak with these people, and they carry guns, which all of the landowners up there do, but, um, I even complained at sheriff's department, that I was concerned, because they were shooting their weapons. And I'm outside most of the time during the day, as well as a lot of our other neighbors, and concerned about being shot at, accidentally, we could be shot. Um, last year, Tom and I had our window shot out of our white pickup truck, it was sitting in our driveway. Um, I did contact marijuana enforcement last week, and talked to, uh, investigator Barnes, investigator Barnes looked it up, and said, "These people are not registered, and they do not have a license to grow." Um, and then I contacted, uh, Mr. Lopez, and spoke with him last week to find out when the commissioner's meeting was, and if it was an open meeting. So, I mean, the only thing we're doing is asking for help, um, if they're up here growing illegally, then they shouldn't be, um...
I'd, I'd like to ask a question, what worries or anything like that?
Um, no, I have not, that's when I spoke with, uh, Mr. Elsa, worked for Bostonburg, um, and we are going to follow this all the way up to the chain of mail. Now, if any, I have the other names, what does that mean, what about them?
Uh, Jennifer Lee?
I'm just very much covered in...
Okay. Becky Guinness?
And, uh, I'm with the, uh, La Rida, in La Rida, that are growing. And they seem to be, and shut off a, uh, association road, posted, they, uh, put a rope up, there's five lots. They, uh, on the lot that they bought, that's not... This is just an example, it's not just La Rida, lots are hard to tell where they are, and, uh, it's not very weak, that's no, no real, and that's probably what needs to be done, most of our lower than the property value, the resale best. And I don't think La Rida, it's really hurting this bad, and, uh, I kinda realize what the sheriff's people gets, and they get. Also, they should grow these grows.
Labor registration, basically, because we are deemed that there would be no grow, until we change that, they're, they're...
I guess anybody will come in, buy a lot, sit up.
And they're all medicinal, I mean, they're eight greenhouses, you know, you go through quite a bit, so...
But they do not have to reg, or if I'm not counting, I think they have to reg, I would say, free your harvest. If you got up here, buy a lot, and, uh, I think you guys, why not?
We don't have the sales tax in this county?
Sold within state or within your town, or...
It's, it's ill by decree, but medicinal, that is the one that's outside the lines of legal, but the medicinal, that's the loophole around that.
Basically, our law fathers, not much are sure, could have stopped a lot of this.
Last year, they took U-Hauls, didn't mention this either, um, last year, I... So, you know, there should be something that should...
Of state concerning the grows that we have in our county, uh, also, they can do no, uh, punishment for it, and they're using the medical part of it to grow these grows, uh, and I have contact with them about every other week to see how we can put a plan together to go out and check, because I use the planning office just to go check permits and see if they've got permits. My issue has always been, you know, when I was there, forever and ever, until the Supreme Court called, because there are some agencies that are against it in the federal, you know, the government isn't getting, uh, tax, you know, and pay that, you know, uh, and probably, I don't think they can. People are calling all, want marijuana, you mentioned earlier, uh, it came off so quick, there weren't enough laws in place at the time to regulate it, now you oversee it, so that's one of the things that we're looking at to move with, to regulatory board, that I talked to, pretty hard to ignore, we're trying to make sure that we have the right place.
Yeah, it's, it's a really rough and hard place, that, uh, we just lost, put our, uh, predicament for the counties, for a lot of counties, it's not just here, for all counties, and it's experience. Some of the same thing, it's just, uh, not as well-known as, our county's so large, and it's so big, uh, just last month, I was taking a ride between Pinot Canyon and Aguar, and found about seven grows up there as well, so, uh, District Attorney Solano was brought in, uh, a few, heard about that a month and a half ago, the DEA, um, to come help combat some of these issues with our heroin, opioid epidemic here, as well as the legal growth as well, so, he's on the right.
Yeah, well, they're getting ready to harvest too, so they're gonna be moving it out of state.
A good time for a fire.
Yeah, don't be moving it, that's too much work.
Anybody else in our group wanna say anything?
Yeah, I would like to, just one more point I'd like to make. There is one other point I'd like to make, and... There's a lot of shady areas here that I, I think are gonna be missed, and, uh, it seems to be a lot more could be done, as far as really getting it on top of control, and getting a lot more rules and regulations, and, you know...
Uh, I agree, deemed illegal, we can't put any parameters on it, because we have to legalize it, parameters on it, and possibly have some more enforcement on it, but since we are not debruised, and if we were to legalize it, and to possibly act it, we couldn't keep it without debruising measures too. So, there's a, there's a, it's a big, big mess, uh, with marijuana, as far as the county's concerned, but it stands to legalizing or not legalizing, and if it's not legal, how can you put parameters on it? Some of the same thing, it's just not as well known as, our county's so large and it's so big. Just last month, I was taking a ride between Pinot Canyon and Aguarde and found about seven grows up there as well. So District Attorney Solano was brought in, a few, heard about that a month and a half ago, the DEA, to come help combat some of these issues with our heroin epidemic here as well as the legal growth as well. So he's on the right.
Well, they're getting ready to harvest too, so they're going to be moving it out of state.
A good time for fire.
Yeah, don't be moving it, that would be too much work.
Anybody else in our group want to say anything?
Yeah, I would like to, just one more point I'd like to make. There is one other point I'd like to make, and it's all area. There's a, there's a lot of shady areas here that I, I think are going to be missed. And it seems to be a lot more could be done as far as really getting it out of control and getting a lot more rules and regulations and, you know.
Either deemed illegal, we can't put many parameters on it because we have to legalize it. Parameters on it and possibly have some more enforcement on it. But since we are not debruised, and if we were to legalize it and to possibly act it, we couldn't keep it without debruising measures too. So there's a, there's a, it's a big, big mess with marijuana as far as the county's concerned. But it stands to legalizing or not legalizing anyway, it's not legal, how can you put parameters on it? So that's the issue that we have. But if we were to legalize it, it wouldn't benefit the county because we don't have a debruising measure in place to collect any type of taxes on it. So we get no money for marijuana in the county at all. People are going to believe things we do, we do not, not one dime. As far as the water, that'd be an issue you'd probably have to ask the city, the city manager. No water, then any of the grow operations illegal. But if you actually look at the meters.
That'll take you for a county from the river. That is the only one government agency from the river. So once it gets to the head, any water coming out of the county, you just remember, all the irrigation damage, you know, from town, you know, government, you still need to go under that wall. Now, if you tap the water to the river, above it, am I heard, then you can do that legally, you have to lock the氮气 down. That's what I just learned.
So, they're legal, they're taking, you know, Alamos or West, western water stations. But if they take it out of Trinidad Water Station, it can't be illegal.
If the water on the river, no. And that's the, our water system though, we have to be locked down normally. It's a different water system than that we're talking about here. So thirty percent of the ones that get to the dam, it can't be used once it gets out. Because the city wants, the city wants, they are for it. And that's about water, you just gotta call that water, those are thousands.
What one of my favorites asked is, let me show you something here. I asked years ago if they would put tent on the windows. You can get a laminate, but one thing I can't control is backlight. See how, my other camera can control it. I can't do much about that. But I have like a laminate on my windows in my chapel. It's less than a box. And so this camera's struggling. And if we knock, if we turn windows down, you know, it's peel on, peel off. If you don't like it, you can take it off. But it would really help the quality.
Okay, why don't, why don't you get with Pete? Sorry. Okay. Thank you all for coming, appreciate it. Points as well taken and you, misery with you.
David, my name's Dave Orfahl and I'm a pilot. Based two different airlines over the period of time. Hours a day, which is, which is not a lot. Man fly into Trinidad, refuel and keep, as well as flight planning, we kind of use a flyby. We put a key code, they buy, we'll say $500 worth of fuel or access. So Raton is me in 24 hours a day, there's somebody over there. And I think that's kind of a, a different situation than, but Walsenburg, which is probably a similar kind of city. That's opened, has, it's opened twenty, who's the manager of the airport. And basically, there's no key code whatsoever, you walk through. And since nineteen ninety, it's anything else with that facility. The other facility I was at yesterday, LaHanta, they're open, I think they're open, okay? For pilots that fly outside of that, whether it's the weekend or it's a, is there's a phone number on the door. And basically says, call this now. Give them the key code, they get into the facility. Again, they, they would have a problem over there at all. Buy more fuel than you have a pilot on the field. But I've been running for, you know, eight years and at the airport and want to continue to do that. But it seems like at minimum that that's giving all of us a key code to that, to that lock. I think we should do that. I'd also appeal to, because I'm a member of the Wisconsin, a few weeks ago, there's a huge flying that's in Wisconsin. We're all flying to the west coast, that's where we can't use the flyby. So that's kind of like- About the airport, you guys have invested a lot of money in the airport, we have a great airport now. In the, in the state, and I think that attracts a lot of people. Even runway strobes and so on and so forth, has added a lot of safety for night flying and for coming in and instant approaches. So we have those. But a lot of the asphalt and it's all going to fall apart. So I'd love to see the county possibly spend a day out there. LaHanta has this, we have a lot of rocks. To propeller driven aircraft, because basically it sprays the rocks back on the wings and other parts of it. Eventually suck those rocks up. And there's equipment you could do, I know LA Gruber, rather, that was dedicated to the airport, ran it up and down the runway twice a month. It's something they, they tow behind an ATV or a truck that has a blower on it, basically they, because that, the rocks are definitely dangerous. And I look the other, when I took off yesterday as a matter of fact. Thanks for listening.
Well, we understand, I make this so that the pilots coming in have access to.
That's one of the reasons you're lame.
Well, and we do have that address to this county. And I think it's something that we should entertain and try to take care of and actually grow into, you know. Or an airport in that way.
Maybe break.
You know, I'm not a pilot and it takes guys like you to come in and certainly much and so on. But we also know there's kind of a minimum service level that we need to install.
Now, this, this issue just sort of arose about two months ago, I think, with the, with the PAP we did. And there's been some things that's been facing. So there's some other concerns, other managers having access to it, we need to probably sort of lock, logging in when they're there, when they're not.
Yeah, and you can also, I know right now, the, basically you have access to everything in those hangars and every airplane in those hangars.
I don't, I don't know how much you weigh it down, but I like the idea of calling dispatch. That way at least you have a name.
Right. Yeah, there's a little bit of intimidation too, David, you're probably the police department especially, so. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you all, County Administrator Report.
Sheriff's come through and they did their test, they brought control. Chandler, they took care of the minor things that were, was either the wrong size. And so they went back, they will reschedule that within a couple. And we're still hopefully on schedule to be able to move into that facility. And Arlene and Todd were laying out from DHS. I know, and I would like to state is that a number of items, what we can do with the hangar, with various, obviously speaking homes. But we have with regard to the rocks, with regard to the weeds and so on. And there's another great facility. And again, we need to spend, walk through there, we looked at, looking at making a prioritize and identify what is, we need to approach that. So we will be bringing that plan with you. And it's, and so administratively, again, are in need of more than 20 hours. We scheduled a plan for review a lot, many other items, but I think that those are-
I'll just add to your, I was able to participate with my children as well. And it opened up a lot for our citizens in Wausau County. We're going to utilize these funds and strategically, handrails and safety measures and lighting and security. And a few days that they spent there, there is a lot of activity. So I'm sure the Sheriff's Department can, some security measures to keep people safe when they're staying at the facilities.
Sometimes we can hear really well, other times- Yeah, I think it's come, cutting in and out. It's always good to have a sound guy as a condition. Thank you. How's that?
We, we can hear, we can hear all of that, it just seems to come and go out and up as the distance of the mic.
Yes, I have, I was just, I have another gentleman stop by, I was wondering.
Good morning, a quick synopsis of, we're in the process of grabbing and rebuilding roads going to county for the last month from the motion we received. As people have been patient, we are, drainage issues need to be able to get roads passing first before we focus on, we're doing project, we have a week ago. It's come, two weeks ago, it's coming Friday. When you first put asphalt down, you look at it's nice, pretty black. But as ages is starting to fight around, you put a chip seal on top of it, try to preserve that surface to keep it from deteriorating even worse than it has already. Sweepboard chips three times, we swept once, we leave it a week, sweep again and then leave it for a couple more weeks and sweep the third. So you don't end up with any issues otherwise. Our whole business consideration of change work for our facilities, for the, for the, for the travel. Commissioner, we have a, I mentioned the grain dash R zero zero three. And when I put together the estimate on it, I was a little high on my estimate from the bids. That we have available, half of this ground and half of this cannon. And ask the board to approve places to aggregate on some roads that were not in the initial. Meter thirty-five eight, twenty-eight seven, thirty-seven hundred in the LaGuardia area, there's some roads that not had material on since. I support that change work. And per your individual request, be sure that the board into administration that they were completely on some of those roads. Because they're GEDs or now roads, they're going to be able to take one truck in, one truck twelve minutes increase. So I think the pricing increases are realistic.
That's a good thing, so I think we hope this can be fun, we bring in grant money down here. You know, it's, it's nice to give some of the state money down there.
Yes. Thank you. So we only got about five minutes and we have some people there from around the association, we could be all right who took back one.
Yeah.
So that they can, anyone who is here.
And the folks from LaGuardia, we have, I think that's where the gravel is on, right?
It'll be gone, I think, sorry, sorry, I said, we're in the front of this one.
Okay, well, that's okay with both of you.
I'm in, yeah.
Minutes, permits to that gravel at the association.
Well, they're looking through the state.
Come on, Bill, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Anytime, I'll see you.
Is it okay if I call you later?
You can call later if you like.
You know, maybe explain to the audience where, kind of where you're going to be able to sell orders, what, what, what you're doing.
Our intent is to have behind the wall of the ground stands, everything decent up in the wall. And then we like also have, you know, inside the, the in-orbing forecast. It's not going to be anywhere, you're just going to be here.
Is it any departure from what you've done to pass?
No. So, you know, we just, you know.
Well, you've been doing this for many, many years.
Hundred and seven.
Hundred and seven, yeah. I don't think you had a hundred and seven years of here.
Try and license you.
I've been doing this for thirty-six. Because I do business with the rental, I'm going to refuse myself as a physician, so. I make more here now.
Yes.
Yes.
One other thing, if we could, if I could get a car or something, you know, either interior. I need to get rid of that.
Can't, can't see that.
Yeah, he just left.
You have a copy?
Can you?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You have, Bill.
Okay, about three minutes. Just take a couple minutes and we'll start the coding. Must fill out the sign up sheet, okay? The board has before it has to consider the record. First, the applicant will comment during this. Morning. Please raise your right hand. You saw we- State your name for the record.
Bill Berluto. Four years ago, I purchased the Ball of Legends. Last year, I opened up a little pizzeria where they served alcohol. And I told them, it's grandfathered in, that you weren't allowed to serve alcohol. I hired a private investigator and I guess what we had to do was find all the, the thing from the private investigator. The last living arrow was in nineteen forty-nine. Have a few papers there and I can serve, you know, people come in and I have a drink with their, with a sign up.
Yes.
Could you submit that?
Sure.
Other stuff or-
I think we've got that.
Okay.
Will you need a copy of this, yeah?
Did you receive one from the area? Yes, all my neighbors and then people that have come in. But pretty much everybody that, all my neighbors, all the calls nine miles down the road to Pinot Valley, they're the closest place. So there really isn't anywhere, you know, if you wanted to come in, I see with the pizza, you know, from some of your-
Miami, I think.
What's that?
Miami, actually, I'm not sure.
No, I think they, maybe I will have a link to it.
So the closest one to you would be one-
Need to offer this information of that I spoke with Mr. Berluto many, many months ago, private, private, private office, I think.
Yeah.
From, I read nineteen oh four.
Yes, correct.
So all that's been corrected through the force to remove that. I, I don't see an issue. Beer and wine, which are, which won't appear. I'm not going to have a bar, I don't want to have that kind of, you know, for resolve, which I think they were with a pickup in the, in the name, did that get resolved?
Yes.
Well, having that question, most of it.
We, we have to give a public vote, sorry. Is there anybody for the public? Anybody for the public? Public comment is now closed. Single names on the public comment sign up sheet, public comment is now closed. Offerable. Board may also continue to hear any additional information has been requested from the applicant. Any decision must be made within thirty minutes. Councilor, man.
Commissioner Loeb?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
And Commissioner White?
Under due business, oh, yeah, under due business.
I'm gonna remove myself from the meeting, I have my natural investment in this. Come back here by four. Or five. You got it. Office is open, if you want to.
Okay, we have a big deal. Dean Loeb, and Ray Loeb.
Everything is in order and he's still looked at by the county.
And there was no, last year.
No calls.
Application. It's been paid, motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, please, thanks, girl. Thanks for giving it to Lisa. I didn't see District Attorney President.
Miller, that's in the District Attorney's office, Henry is actually in court at the moment. So I have a draft proposal that we're going to make that whatever-
So have a draft proposal to make whatever changes are necessary. I was in stand, I know that there's some lingering concern in both commissions about somehow put you in a position to make leverage against your will. And both commissions have got it. And I say we can't kind of solve that. That the reason the District Attorney is pushing to have the sales tax, I guess, this is not a belts and suspenders issue, this is a. Because that would probably mean another squeeze on the budget entirely, but warrants are made up by a category from the city. But we cannot cancel that and support both of these items and move forward. A draft, if you don't have any language, and obviously, I think to us, have any questions?
I have a couple and.
That's one of the things that we could talk about.
And one of the things that I don't understand, Mr. Loeb, are dedicated exclusively to prosecution costs in Los Angeles County in advance, turned by the state demographers estimate of comparative population. What are you saying that if that's.
That's, that's what that's saying, yes. Basically, what's the last time that was actually, I guess there's an IG out there for it around somewhere. If they can't meet their thirty three percent share, then this reserves to commission purposes.
Now, I am confused. We're sequestering it here and then we're going to distribute it amongst the other public safeties?
If it was, one of the reasons that Horfino is paying more than their thirty three percent a month to get a felony prosecutor. So they're paying additional money. So it would give you the option to either let finance that just for Los Angeles County, you can do it out of those funds.
Okay. And just so, Chip Taylor from CCI has come down on Wednesday and this may be a really good time for both of us on here. So.
We're talking about next week.
And we have to say that we would all six sit down and.
There's other.
I'll second that also.
Lopez? And Commissioner Loeb?
Yes, and we would.
I was gonna say we'd make sure it enters this one. We'll try to get every.
Questions arise, you may not want us answering.
Commissioner Loeb, if I may, I did have a discussion with Chip Taylor at CCI and he suggested to discuss issues and questions. And he was suggesting a work session, doing that notice sooner rather than later or alike, to tell you when it is.
Very good. I think whatever works for the division is what I'm asking those things. Okay. Consideration of man agreement of the state of Colorado Department of Public Safety Division of Homeland Security and Emergency. So what?
And what it is, it's federal dollars that match my emergency management salary. We applied in January, financial secret system, we signed up on it as well as US administration. Formant grant calls for is for us to have different trainings, different exercises, which we have purchased a generator in the past. We've purchased radios for the program. We've been doing this emergency management program.
Is that for this year or for next year?
That's for two thousand seventeen, every quarter they send us a portion of the grant lines.
And we've applied for it, but it hasn't been.
They've been on what I've performed in that quarter, saying if I had any answers to that program. And then they in turn send us a check for that portion of the, we'd have to get with Kristy to see if we received that. And I think we have it signed.
Okay, so then they, they kind of live.
Yeah, Kim applied for this grant in January and so the grant is here, it's still giving access to money. And I think that is ten thousand dollars, there is one consideration we will be discussing, but that we have already had. A news base that you'll see that we need to have the emergency management folks so that they can then return that. Some years we've not received it till quite late and then that has a real impact.
They make a supplemental.
Looking at it and one of the points when we had earlier discussion with staff was that it's not entirely that the budget already been approved. So then the match for this.
Now, last year's budget reflected five thousand dollars received and the budgets already approved, so.
Okay.
Just depending on what the federal government gives, what they do is they give the state Colorado a big chunk in represent. Our program has been building up year after year, so that's why we're getting moves through each state is when we, when we find out and that was the.
We also addressed the available for use. You'll get back for the year ends, because it doesn't then.
Just, just as we got a voice.
We send enough financial statements each quarter, Kristy gives me a financial statement.
So managing would be anything that we would.
We've been heard more than our share of ten thousand, based on.
And what didn't is indicated initially asked for ten. And so the ten is, it was needed in the budget and then we did, that just show over expended. And it will definitely be part of the big year review.
If they can, they give us ten thousand, please.
For something earlier or.
They, they can, but then it's up to the feds and the feds wait until they're, we can probably put in for it, we still wouldn't know until mid-year or next year.
Right, but my, my question, in between, parents go in and reply for more, seemingly.
Do you have multiple approvals for the same grant?
Well, this grant is just around once a year, but when they have leftover, once they give it out, the local command unit over at the sheriff's office, the radios, those all come in as special grants after that money, supply money to. Supply our emergency operations center, which is across the street at the rice building, TVs and computers to get our UFC up. Emergency operations center, still coming, the feds always just hold on to all the money they haven't told us, start receipts in and then we get ready for us.
Airport people, if you hear about something that makes work. So I guess. Cause I.
Well, I think what needs to be done is, and I kind of, that might be something as well as possibly looking at purchase and self-monitoring, there's a monitoring piece on it. That might be something we add to that so we can see the base to the, to the name of the company in and see if they're carrying anything out. But in the meantime, we could have a better solution for the, simply saves the, like using the past, monitor. Tap into them, which is something dispatch can probably monitor, they might hope that C P D would have an issue with that, but definitely something we can look into.
Okay, based on what you said, you could have a.
Have a very clear.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, more on the minds for identification purposes. You know, when they call Amber code, the pilot's name, their physical address, possibly their plane number. And then that way, at least we have that recorded. And then often we know that Pilot A came in at this time and finally.
That, that will be good monitoring, I think, as a separate issue that we would clearly want to also consider that those who are using the hangars currently would be invited with access to the goal. And we could maybe develop a sign up sheet for them or something.
And also possibly have Ken look into a security code for the keys for the hangars that's allowed in the door and everybody's.
Yeah, I could take a match. Plane for a ride.
For right again, you got my permission?
No, no, no.
Yeah, we'll look at that.
Oh, yeah, that was, I guess that was a little red light on my head. Anybody can get those keys to those hangars.
And.
Be careful what you say.
So I guess we'll just wait till you come back to us to, to table this.
Going for.
I, in, in the deal with what he said this morning about opening that door, I think that needs to be addressed this afternoon. Very quickly.
That's used to sell, to restore for the pilots.
Well, no.
For the keys, oh, the keys.
That needs to be addressed. Quickly.
Another quick thought on fueling, I know it's not part of the key thing, but where the fuel station is, there's a little white box there, people think that's where the carburetor is. If we could put like a little sign saying carburetors over there by the terminal. And that, that might save a little bit.
Rest of the train.
The train.
Right.
I do have a housekeeping item that I would like to go back to if you don't mind. And that is, there's a.
The, here, there is, okay.
And so if you would look to your resolution, that cute ambulance, again, right in my eyes.
Okay, we need to read the resolution, so.
Yes. And it's a very late receipt and considering that, gentlemen, I would like to consider asking for your, it's still thirsty. We have been caught behind the curve and so we would like to, we would like it then Wednesday.
I think that it's a simple Thursday afternoon at one fifty.
We were receiving, therefore, we'll go back to the resolution on K N A S, by work within Los Angeles County during calendar year twenty seventeen. Resolution number seventeen dash to West City Court, how does an active rules pertaining to the administration of emergency services operating within each respective county within Colorado. Minimums as has within Los Angeles County, press is in licensed service within Los Angeles County within Colorado. Volunteer fire in performance of the rules, register vote, this resolution was adopted the fifteenth day of August twenty.
We pass it. Yes.
And Commissioner Loeb?
Yes.
Commissioner Loeb?
Yes. Uh, we alluded to this a little bit earlier, Wednesday.
Yeah.
In a work session.
So since we have already said that, if you want me to.
Notice and we need to find out from Chip, you guys need to figure out what timeline.
We have done that, it is Wednesday and I will check, you can say that.
We're meeting here in Los Angeles County.
Yeah.
In Los Angeles.
Twenty, twenty three, I think, twenty. Find this work session and then let them know what time.
The elected officials.
Right. It's a, it's a work session, nothing will be, nothing can be voted on, but we will probably hash out a lot and have a lot of questions. For human services, consideration.
We have those bills you have yet to.
That's all right, good. Kristy has no chance to, to transfer it.
Yes. Executive session, the board will be next, receiving legal. Always for a person. By air motion.
Commissioner Loeb?
Yes.